I'm Gary Allen. David is the one with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, don't answer this. I was trying to turn the mic on.
Sorry, before you were ready.
How long?
Morning, everybody?
Looked like I was blocking there. You couldn't know.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Any new additions to this? Motion to approve.
And the first?
I'll second.
Second, Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Looked through them, Sandy?
Yep, I did look through them and they all looked fine. I think that was...
I'll second that motion.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, for the general public concerns, bring in claims.
Okay, I looked through them and I see Dave's still looking. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me. So, the general was five seven, five, three sixty-two, fifty. And drainage was nine ninety-six, eighty is what I had. Make a motion for that.
I came up with that also, so, pressure.
Okay, all in favor of claims?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
See if you can have it. Don't stick any pipe out the line.
Everybody's happy?
Everyone's happy.
That is no requesting that.
Yeah, a lot of people.
All right, moving on to general public concerns. Nobody outside, nobody on Zoom, we're gonna move on.
Aye. Good morning.
Abby next.
I thought we would join you guys this person today. Um, do you have an updated copy of the agreement that I emailed over? Okay. So, per your request, under number six of the twenty-eighty agreement between the parties regarding the Oklahoma County Department of Homeland Security, I added, "The hourly rate will be billed for services provided in Humboldt County and will not exceed the thirty-five twenty per hour." And I removed the last line per your request of that number six. And then on the next page, on the third page, um, I added in there, per your request, "Any previous twenty-eighty agreements between the parties regarding the Oklahoma County Department of Homeland Security is reviewed and replaced upon the [inaudible] agreement." And our county attorney helped me with the wording of all of that as well, so...
It looks appropriate from what I've read through. Anybody else have any concerns?
And Dave made a motion last week to do away with that twenty-eighty agreement, so, we're...
Start a vote on that.
Make a motion to approve the agreement or twenty-eighty agreement with Oak Honeys County for the Senatorium.
I'll second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I want to meet with me to interview some of you all. We started last Tuesday on the sixth and currently working in orientation training. We are working with the University of Kansas County as far as getting out of school. Doing some distance, doing some work, doing some gradual SBDs and some environmental issues. Degree, so, much better. Got that background and position. I'm in the board and work with the taxpayers of both counties and the subject contractors, local contractors, realtors, and then all that, it's been a week. Yeah, I've learned a few things as well. I think you're probably gonna take it a little bit here, but really understanding and seeing the [inaudible] codes and excited to move forward. I appreciate all of the time that you guys have spent on this and excited about the first going forward.
Good luck with the speed, Dave.
Yep.
Good luck. We'll see you at the Board of Health meeting.
Will you pass on some contact information to me as part of?
Yep, I'll let you know. I'll get back to you after.
All right, thank you.
If you have any issues, come up to the board.
And if you guys attend to your meetings, let us know if there's any concerns up in the county picture.
It's not that hard to get in with people.
I never know.
Kind of fix kids sometimes. They all pretty understand why their subject tank has to go here, not over there, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If you would show up to the Board of Health meeting whenever that comes up again.
Yes, so, it says either in person or [inaudible]. But you want him in person?
In person usually.
Okay.
That's what Dave done, was showed up in person.
I'll [inaudible] those dates?
Yes.
Well, I was actually gonna have that once where you really had nothing to do.
Yeah.
Or if this is a minor subject, this is...
Yeah. All right, thank you.
No, what do we do?
Go down here to the box.
Quarter grid report?
Yep.
Okay.
No, do you guys have copies of this?
Pass the other one around to be signed, that agreement.
Do we all have to sign it?
It looked like it.
It looks good on the back.
On the old one, it was all signed.
Yeah, it shows chair, chairperson, four others. No. Here, right. Put it back in.
And we'll see now.
I don't feel any, Rick, so, whatever say something as reminding, 'cause that's what I've done myself.
Well, pretty good, yeah.
What is the twenty-eighty?
Listen, say it's coming back next week and say, "You all have to sign this."
And I imagine this will have to go over to them to have them sign it on the same page.
Yeah. And they'll have to send us back a copy. Are there meetings on Tuesday over there?
Yes, Tuesday morning, I think it's ten or ten thirty.
That one can go back.
Yep, because they, when we do the financial for the [inaudible] plant taking on until after lunch, so... They're usually like a ten, twelve.
Okay, I think everybody's taken, taken a look at the [inaudible].
I wouldn't make a motion to accept the sheriff's report. I'm assuming being known, he's up here to explain anything that it was all...
I'll second that.
The first and the second, the sheriff's quarterly report, March thirty-first. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Okay, now I have the quarters, quarter, second quarter, excuse me, the first quarter, any March thirty-first.
You're getting a penalty yourself, I mean, we don't need to move that much.
I don't think so, I haven't seen it where I have to sign, but I can if you like now.
I'll make a motion to accept place on file of recorder's quarterly report.
I'll second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, let's go through our committee reports.
All right, for the week, it was pretty minor. I had, I came up on Thursday afternoon for the dispatcher's, um, union negotiations. Got through that in the afternoon, and on Saturday, I drove by and noticed our janitor was out here trimming some trees, so, I helped him. That was my week.
I do have anything. My [inaudible].
Um, Thursday, I was at the dispatcher's meeting negotiations. It's the only thing I have.
Um, okay.
That's it.
Past Monday, we had an LEC board meeting that morning. And that was my only official meeting last week.
I had the LEC meeting Monday morning, and I moved out of, um, Humboldt County. That was a week before Humboldt County, I was gonna disrupt that one, we decided to put it in there. And then Thursday, I had a bank Iowa meeting at Humboldt County Economic Development at seven. Dispatch negotiations at twelve thirty on Thursday. It's all those three things. Okay. Thursday morning at seven.
You could've pretty much spent your day in town, man.
Yeah, I first did it. Always an interesting meeting. Well, anything else we wanna visit about? Will we wait for Ben to show up at eight fifty or...?
Well, I have a question, and I am not looking for us to spend money, but our, we don't really have a whole lot of... Usually, the last couple of years, we've had numerous drainage projects going on. Um, has anybody, are we considering doing something, ditch this summer, late fall? I mean, are we actively pursuing something that we're gonna kick off here?
I think there's, um, someone that's been visiting with me about, I can't remember what branch it is, of six up there. Six, I just called, there's a branch that goes up towards Highway Three where they cleaned the upper end of it a couple of years ago. And if you go up there and look at it, it's, the lower end needs a little touch up, about two and a half miles.
That's the one that stopped it, Dave?
Yes. And the pipe underneath the road, it's got about two and a half feet of silt in it. And they want to clean that, continue on down the stream.
Isn't that kind of gonna work just as a work or a project later on this year?
Yeah. But it's not really a project. I don't think we have any big major drainage problems.
No, I'm not saying that we have any problems, I'm just curious if we have any...
Well, she's not a project, yeah. Nobody projects, but...
I visited with Doug Marshall this morning, 'cause I saw him in town, and I, so, I called him and I said, "Hey." He says, "Well, one thing, we really don't, there isn't many rain, so, no water sitting."
People don't get excited.
So, we don't know if the tiles aren't working, 'cause they're pretty much dry.
No.
And he said, "You know, we got some tiles that we're repairing, but we just, until we get some rain to, to start moving some water and see if ponds are setting and see if dirt's getting pulled into the tile, then we really don't know." So, I guess not that... I'm all, I need to try and get...
That's why I didn't know one issue that I think needs to be explored, and that's on, um, I can't even remember the name, the district number. It's just east of town out here by where the trail, there's a main that goes underneath the trail. And it, um...
Eight?
Yeah, that might be where it's at.
Try there, huh?
Sixty-three?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Right down here, there's a ton of water that sits up here. And it seems like it's getting worse, and I wonder, there's a ton of trees right on the trail. I kinda sometimes wonder if it can be a blockage.
Bark is driven, Dave.
You know? 'Cause I often wondered why so much water sits there. But nobody's complaining about it. But I do believe it could be an issue, 'cause that's what we find out when you go through dry areas. The roots find their ways to tiles, and then they plug them up.
I was, we're doing east of town, but doing...
East of town pipes, that, that hand. Um, cleanouts all been done, and jeez, there's about four inches of water in that ditch. Moving, you know? It's where it was August.
Well, it's, it's a good thing, to a degree, 'cause there's some outstanding reporters that Doug mentioned, and a few of the other ones, and they get caught up with those. I mean, I think there's probably some cleanout areas that we can address and probably hear about, like Rick said, that, uh, that's already in the works. There's probably some other spots like that where it's a tile or two that, you know...
Need a little touch up.
Needs some touch ups, and there's plenty of those, but...
I know, uh, up there on eighteen, I seen Peterson doing that aqua seating.
Yep, hydro seating, and that's, uh, they kinda talked from last fall, and it's primarily the worst spots where the, uh...
Where it's sloped.
The, the bank repair, where, I mean, they just absolutely said to fix it, shave it, and redo it. And they wanted to get hydro seating done on that, 'cause there's no chance of any grass growing back there, because it's just been, it was screwed up, and they fixed it, and they're getting those spots. I don't think it's a really good idea.
I did have a phone call from this Cole Anderson, and I needed a [inaudible].
Yeah.
He called me and, um, he said, "I'm really looking for some work." I said, "Well, Cole, why don't you come out and visit with the, the board, so we get to know who you are?" I said, "Bring a list of references." Um, so, he might show up today, I don't know if he will or not. Uh, I told him probably about nine thirty would be a good time for him to show up. Um, I told him that, right now, we don't have a long list of projects, 'cause he was looking for something for, I think, a long reach, like ditch cleaning and stuff. And I could be mistaken on that, but he, he wanted to visit, so I said, "Come on up there, we can learn how our process works, so you don't miss a lot." That's a good idea, you know, get started the right way.
Right. Where's my first item?
All right.
How you doing?
I got a question. When we started the animal shelter, we said we would donate seventy-five hundred. They tell me that's never been paid. It should be eight thousand, 'cause we said we would match the other cities, and Dakota City gave five hundred. It should be eight thousand that we owe them. Is that coming out this year's budget or next?
I better go back and check on that, then.
How is it? Is it, what's it called?
Muffet, Muffet or Humboldt?
At that time, it probably went to, or was that, we purchased the land, paid for the land?
Yep.
And then we're gonna give so much a year?
Yep. So, that's why I was wondering if it comes out this year or next year. City of Humboldt said they would match the seventy-five hundred, would give seventy-five hundred to get the land for it.
You look confused. There's not maybe not about forty-five hundred that we're paying for a year? I don't know why that number sticks in my head, but... May have to go back and look in a minute.
Yeah, go back and look and see what...
And you said something about matching funds?
The city would match for...
Some, some of these smaller communities, instead of by them to donate a little bit.
We said that, uh, if the other communities would donate, like Dakota City gave five hundred, uh, Bo gave a hundred, uh, drag gates on, I don't remember what they give, but some of the littler towns, if they give, we'd match up to ten.
Max, maximum of ten thousand.
Yeah, match it to ten.
I don't remember that either, so, don't feel bad.
I can't remember that.
Okay.
Anyway, he said they hadn't received any money yet, so, I just wondered if we paid any of that, or if it was all [inaudible].
I remember that, a bunch of meetings, and we said, "Yeah, he said seventy-five hundred, and the city said so." Yeah. At home first, and then I remember about the, no one asked the money, it's the other town, yeah.
Anyway, check and see if we paid anything in the past year.
Okay, anything else?
Now, it's been turned up one minute early.
Morning.
Morning.
Got a couple things on the agendas today. The first item is to approve an application to work in the county driveway with Martin Marietta and Jericho Services to place dust control on two hundred tenth and Penn Avenue. Uh, Martin Marietta hires one company to do all of their location sites, and then another company happens to be Jericho. We have a copy of their insurance. They typically do a calcium chloride mixture versus [inaudible]. But, uh, it's a simpler product. It's just clear versus, uh, darker color.
Everything all right with it?
Yeah, yeah, we've got a copy of their insurance. Uh, I think we're gonna, we're gonna try and get in this week and do it. All the paperwork.
Make a motion to approve it.
Here we have the first.
I'll second that.
Second, Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application to work for Larson Brothers for some tiling.
Uh, Martin Brothers, they would like a, they would like a application to work in the county driveway to through Texas Avenue, to do a [inaudible] crossing to run from the east to the west, to the [inaudible]. This is through, um, I talked to Jimmy Holzberg two weeks ago, excuse me, two weeks ago, about doing this. Um, but he didn't have a contractor lined up at the time. Uh, and then Levi and Luke Larson, uh, I talked to them a couple times last week. They're the contractor that they ended up hiring, so, I think it goes from Jerome Colehouse's property on the east side of Texas, west through to Holzberg's property in [inaudible]. I'm not sure which district it is, but it's all in the same district, so, they're not [inaudible].
Problem four. I think that's four.
So, this is just install a crossing?
Right, so, this would be, uh, they're requesting, uh, fifty percent up to two thousand dollars to do a gravel road crossing. I understand that they gotta have forty foot of concrete placed on each roadway.
Twelve. How big is it?
Four inch. You know how big the tile is?
Well, you don't know if it's eighteen, but it's no, but it is gonna be a twelve?
It's gonna be a twelve inch under the road.
You know how big the tile is?
Uh, I know it's twelve inch in the county portion, but I don't know what they're running.
Okay. I mean, is this a matter of they may run the tile through the culvert, or just up to it?
Uh, I, I imagine the room twelve inch at least from right away to right away, and then beyond that, uh, [inaudible]. Outside, that's they go out into Jerome's property.
Yep. Well, that looks like it's all in order, so, I would make a motion to approve that permit.
Here we have a first.
I'll second it.
Second, my Dave, all in favor of the pedal crossing?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The new...
Fifty-one? I think it is.
Will oversee the refilling?
Yes.
Crack filling, the railway?
I've been instructed that they need to notify us. I think they're gonna get signs from us in closure, so, we'll know when they're planning on doing. I told, I told them we need to know from the [inaudible] so that we can let law enforcement know. Uh, that way we can inspect it before they go.
That's what I'd like, at least to be able to walk by it and look at it and not say, "Well, it looks like the pipe on both ends are fine."
Usually, we snap a couple of pictures and then take them and, uh, work in the right away.
Solid. Perfect.
Okay, now moving on to the crack filling quotes for twenty-one. I received, uh, three separate quotes for different types of crack filling. Blacktop service, bargain, construction, and [inaudible]. These do a different type of product, um, blacktop service and bargain, typically do a route and seal. That's where they go in with the, the large cutters and open up the cracks and then fill them with a, a rubberized caulk. Uh, bargain also does the same type of, uh, [inaudible]. So, it's basically blow the crack out, and then they put a [inaudible] into the crack and basically fill it up. Different prices on all of them. For mild, blacktop service, that's the exact same price per pound as bargain and route and seal. I guess that's my recommendation, that maybe either local and state with blacktop service and route and seal.
I have a question on that. Have you had experience with these different methods and with these different companies for this?
We've worked with all of them, uh, I think here's bargain's been in, um, probably eight, ten years. I know they did the stretch between [inaudible] years ago. Blacktop service, obviously, we've got a lot of experience with them. [inaudible], we use their product, [inaudible], um, building all those cracks in. And then [inaudible] at the [inaudible]. They've all got, uh, applications, they're, they're, they're different. Route and seals a little bit cheaper, but you use more material because you're opening that crack up. Blow and go, or the clean and seal, is basically just blowing out the crack, and you continue to fill it up with this [inaudible] until it comes to the top. And then, obviously, it will continue to blow me down, so, it, it fills the void. Or no, keeps the water out. They, they both do a good job of keeping some water out as long as they stay sealed.
In some respects, I was really thinking about that, is there any smoothness factor? You know, 'cause some of these cracks, uh, you feel...
Right. [inaudible] have anything to do with that. I mean, uh, the, the smoothness factor, that's gonna be the [inaudible] contract that we got with [inaudible].
Right.
Um, I don't know who my contract's gonna be, because I don't need any more [inaudible].
Well, maybe better than, is longevity of this, but you really, they both have worked well.
They both have... I don't have an answer for longevity on the, on the clean and seal, because we just did that...
Yes, yeah.
Last year, ten years ago, so, I mean, as far as longevity, I don't know on that one.
Still more just [inaudible] than...
It is.
It's like crack time.
Keep it...
Asphalt, asphalt cracks.
Right.
So, a lot of times, it's, uh, a year later, or two years later, and basically you're trying to...
How many years has it been since the [inaudible] tree? But they're now doing from old field, clear over the, clear over the underside of [inaudible]. And those cracks are, you know, that, it doesn't seem like that was that old, but they've been doing that.
They developed, uh, State Avenue was more on that we're gonna have them do. We've track filled that, but it's been probably six, eight years ago, probably longer. But, uh, new cracks developing.
Free thaw, thieves?
Yep. Some of our roads are old state roads that have some [inaudible] underneath the [inaudible]. And that creates a rough ride, so, [inaudible] is that way. The whole [inaudible] stretches, old State two twenty-two, and that's got a lot of handles that are constantly moving up.
You would recommend blacktop service for, uh, being considered the route and seal?
For the route and seal for this year, yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to go with the blacktop service for the route and seal for the crack filling as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, the first and the second for the quote for twenty-one, the blacktop services. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is that, like, middle of summer or end of the summer, or what is their timeframe on that?
They'll be doing it in two waves. They're gonna try and do the first part here pretty soon, uh, before [inaudible] comes in and does the releveling on State... comes in and does the slurry leveling on State Avenue with C sixty-three and the four mile stretch we call running School Road. Um, those two stretches are scheduled to get a slurry level, so they're gonna come in and do the route and seal first, seal the joints up, and then they'll come back in the fall to finish up. I think they got another seven or eight miles of crack filling on that.
Here, when they're gonna start on the Gosh Park Road, I know they went out and did some milling samples.
They did some milling samples, uh, on both of different roads here recently. The plan is digging can start, or milling can start at the end of this month. We've got a reconstruction meeting by Zoom on Friday at, if anybody wants to attend forward. Uh, but right now their, their plan is to move in and start milling on, I believe the week of the twenty-sixth. Yeah, the week of the twenty-sixth is when they're planning on moving in and starting milling. So the plan is the, the first road that they're gonna asphalt is the Clear Road, then the Pioneer Loop, the Gosh, then the Drag Circle, and then up to C twenty.
Well, I guess as long as, whatever we do with that, we just make sure that the quarry knows that the park will be the biggest one that is gonna be affected, isn't it?
The quarry will be the first to know because the plant's gonna.
That's where the plant's gonna be.
There. Uh, they should have good communications there, right? Our, our biggest issue is we're working Gosh where we've got Fort Terra.
Right.
And the elevator usually holds on that road a bit.
Yep. And depending on when farming actually kicks off, then you have a whole bunch of farmers that are saying, we gotta get on that road. And then, so, and I know that you do your best to keep communication lines open, so.
The, the nice thing will be it's asphalt, so it's probably just gonna be down the main traffic.
Right.
Absolutely. Traffic a little bit might be a little slow, but.
Right. You, you might have to wait a little while. Obviously, I'd recommend taking the highway or going around.
Right.
But if, if you're a farmer, you gotta get to that field, you gotta get to that field.
Right. Well, you do good job posting stuff and trying to, I, we all try to forward it when we see stuff, so I guess use the website and let everybody know where we're at.
But I figure we'll be, we'll probably start saving and navigating the mag. I think that should be done by the end of the month, so.
Good.
Get them in, get them out.
Give them something in forgetfulness and timeliness, which is a good point. You know, the going east of Livermore, the kind of resurfacing project up that hill, could you, you know, and there's a couple of whatever, uh, in the city proper divots in that road that you talked about, uh, you know, on C twenty, going to Livermore, would that be a possibility of when they do the asphalt work to the east, maybe they could address those, couple of road bad, something like settled or it's been cut out and replaced and then the, the patch, if you will, something like it's settled, is that, is that a possibility then when they're?
I can look at it with the foreman. I mean, Matthew's a big company, you know, they want to take chunks.
But I mean, they're gonna be right there, so.
Yeah, like I said, I can look at it, I can tell you, yeah.
No, but you, there's something to at least take a look at, cause we had talked about it and I don't know, the, the city is entirely responsible or partially, they are entirely responsible.
Yeah, they get the twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, they get it back.
We do our, we call that money back.
Back to them, okay.
Maintenance.
So, I mean, if they would know or if you would check it out, because they probably would, but you could check and see if that's a possibility that might be a good time thing because they're there.
Right, and, and I can, I can definitely talk to the foreman for the three and see if that's something that they wanna tackle otherwise from Blacktop Services, local, whatever you're aware of.
Yep. So, yeah, whichever direction, but we did hit that, cause that's, you know, speaking of a lot of farm traffic, of course, the elevator and it's getting worse.
Or we could just build it through Underbird Street.
I don't have that much problem with that. It's the other direction, Pooch. East, not west. They've got a really nice smooth, uh, non-grunge anymore to get across the town, so I mean, I'm fairly decent. Not that you're, like you mentioned, old, uh, antique, old state roads, yeah, I was quite aware of that.
We all, we all have between both of the.
Yeah, yes, yep.
Um, we are, you guys lining, center lining this week. I know you guys have probably seen the trailer out at, at our office.
Early this year.
Yeah, well, they were shut off last year, so technically they're a little late, but, uh, they should be in doing striping this week. We closed Gosh Park down this morning, uh, about eight o'clock. Patrick's supposed to be there between eleven and eleven thirty for us to redo that narrow five-month patch with county forces. Um, the sports day shop is tackling that this morning. Um, the larger patch will, by Matthew, they go in, could be the Gosh Park section, we should record that out. Always for Holland Rock.
Do I need to sign anything else in charge?
I did. Holland Rock, they mentioned the lady roadways, uh, trying to move the material around from where we've got shoulders.
Keep people fa- happy?
Yeah.
I've gotten several pictures of, have they lost their mind, or what are they doing to why would we cut it when it's gonna rain to, well?
We've been, we've been cutting for about a month, month and a half right now, and the phone started ringing quite a bit here last week after we got the rain.
Right. And then I had one gentleman tell me, they finally did it, they, they finally started doing that and I've, I've been happy. I'm like, seriously?
Gary called, Gary didn't call. I mean, I said, you're doing it, I said, hang on, I gotta sit down.
I went like this myself.
Yep, that almost offset all the other people that were like, they lost their mind, but.
Well, he was the one that told me to be, had to tell his grandson, just relax, it, what they're doing is the way you gotta take care of this. And his grandson's like, what? Grandpa, are you sure you're alright? So, it was good.
It's the procedure to get it done because that has to be done prior to getting the rock to keep the road, which.
But it can get messy though.
It does, and of course, yeah, they wanna know about the timing, well, we don't ever know quite when it's gonna rain and you can't put rock on and fall and that's a mess, so it's, it's, it's kind of crap shoot.
I mean, we're, we're cutting gutters and, and like I told some people last week, you know, I mean, we're cutting roads that haven't been touched in fifteen, twenty years, uh, there's a lot of material out there on the shoulders.
I'm pretty sure if you've looked into that, that's where I got the most concerns, it's the ones that happen in the droughts, we just, I don't want to add those materials, but, uh, I was reassured by one of the road foremen that just, everyone be patient, he said the roads will be a lot better than they have been when we get done with our process and the rock gets applied, they'll be very, very nice.
Well, we had enough sunshine and wind over the weekend off the roads.
Yeah, there we go. Those three, three days worth rain, personally, they got pretty.
Yeah, the material really slopped.
They really did, I mean, they got, they got soft.
Yeah, you almost needed the four-wheeler, I saw them like driving six inches of snow. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you. I'll just head out. Have a good one.
Todd's early, we were gonna call you.
What does we got here?
Oh, well, thank you, we'll get that taken. Yeah, but would you touch base with the, you know, with the thing Livermore, just so we don't miss an opportunity to get that fixed or something? Thank you, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Todd.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
We were gonna make Rick do a juggling now, too.
You can hang for ten minutes, Todd. You can order tennis for ten minutes.
Well, I guess as you guys all know, or all, are all aware, the conservation board's been looking at options for future uses of the recent dam. Um, and I got a friend, Rachel, with me today.
Good morning.
She's been helping us kind of guide us through the process. Um, she's gonna give us an update as far as where we're at with the process, um, update us on the survey that we did or was conducted and then maybe give us a little bit of, uh, a little guidance as far as where we go from here.
Perfect.
Great. Okay, I think my mouth.
Sure.
It's so great to see people. I have no idea, a year ago, you know, I've been working on this with community, been tied for about the last year or so, started a little before so that it was a game or day, and, uh, then everything shut down and so it all got delayed a little bit until we figured out how to do this, it's just really great to be out and about.
Right.
Um, and so what I wanna do is talk about everything to date, uh, then the result of the work that's been done in the community in terms of listening and then a little bit about what's forward. So, we started out to, yeah, my picture, my job as ventilist to all parts of the community to try to understand all the issues that might possibly relate to the river and the dam and to see the big picture. And you guys are living it every day for decades and so it's sometimes right to just have another perfect minute and say, what's going on? What are the, what are the options? So I started out by interviewing about thirty people and I got a pretty good sense, um, and I like to do that first before we have any public meetings, so I know what the hot issues are and what the concerns are. And so then we started the story map project, which I hope you've seen, it's a page that adds new information and it's a way for Todd and the, the conservation board and myself to communicate through this process of really which is just listening and bringing some information, what information is known, um, data per se about the dam to, to the forefront and to have, uh, you know, a place for that to be. And then we also set up an email just for the project and it's called humble, it's that, we have a question. And we got a lot of questions and we did story map and the email in lieu of the normal public face-to-face process. And what we're finding is actually we're getting better engaged this way because people can participate twenty-four seven on their own time. And, um, so I want you to know that the process of the social work that we've done together is probably the most robust of any that we've done in Iowa, two of the story maps. And what I also want, another big point is to let you know that there's enormous interest in the project. And there's maybe one person that doesn't want anything changed. I don't know who that person is, but, uh, or maybe two, but everybody else is really fighting for something to happen. And then the, the interesting part is, um, and it is really, truly interesting for me as a social scientist and an environmental scientist, that there really are some very distinct differences in ideas. Uh, so I would, I would say, hold the path, please, I made a little package for you and this has all of the survey information, it has my contact information on the front. And the first thing in there is the survey itself with the result, it's kind of like the key to the path. And before you start, and you'll have these, and I'm also available to answer more questions, um, after I leave, if there are some, but there is also some pie, two pie charts behind the survey. And I'd like to just look to those real quick because I took the two big questions that Todd was really most interested in and made by you. The first one that's green and orange talks about like what kind of changes would you question directly for them? And they could answer, they could choose as many as they want. So if they only supported keeping the dam pressed at the same elevation and having a pool, they could choose that. But if they wanted that and something else or all three, they could choose that. And so what we found is that a little other half would like to keep the dam the height it is and have a pool, but a little more than half actually either want the dam removed or they want it modified to lower, to reduce play. And so it's, and so between that little big, you know, fifty-five percent, they're split with a few more wanting to remove the dam than modifying it. So those are like the three, the two, the most drastic range of keeping it, you know, restore the dam, restore the pool and moving it slowly, but the two biggest possible differences in the world. And, and, uh, so, so what all the, you know, the purpose of the study was to say where are people and then what's next. And so when I think this, what I, what I think this shows, and by the way, the removing the dam contingent is much larger than I anticipated.
I, I got one question for you.
You go.
I think my, I don't know if my math is wrong, but I got a hundred and five percent.
Yeah, because they could pick more than one.
Was that like that?
Yeah, so and it's on the survey results, I put that in there too because it's confusing. Some people thought, you know, anything, just do something.
Just do something.
Yeah, or some people had like, I want modify, or even though one person had, I want either replace, you know, restore it to where it was or modify it, you know, so I added those, I put everybody, the things, people would possibly support it to be.
Gotcha.
But I'm glad that you asked that question.
Well, I guess I'd skew the numbers a little bit, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, what was I just, what was I?
Sorry.
No, no, you're fine, it's fine, it's fine, it's okay for me. Um, oh, so what it tells you, I think, is that you have, you have all kinds of viable interest in multiple, and this is what we typically expect, by the way, this whole process. There is, there is, I don't know of a dam project in Iowa that hasn't been for the dam owners. There's always different things. There are always people that, some people that want one thing and some people that want another thing and the people, you know, in the end, you will make a decision and, and that decision will be made based on the factors that you all find are important to you and it's your decision. So the, um, the, there will always be people on you, if you're trying to.
I think the other part of this is that half of them, the half that wanna keep the dam are probably the people that have the boat, would still like to be able to boat above it like the old days. The other half that wanna canoe, kayak, whatever, they're the ones that wanna move towards that, whatever the towns are over east, the.
Manchester.
Manchester and something like that and, and, but there's still that group, I mean, just from listening to the people that I've talked with, uh, they still believe that it's the old day where we can go boating from Friday afternoon till Sunday night and get cleared of rotting and whatnot, that's.
And that's very much, there's a contingent, you'll see it in the comments.
Yep.
All the written comments that we got summarized in a straight form and you'll see a lot of bring it back the way it was, it worked fine before, just put it back the way it was. And then I would say too, the people that are interested in modification and or removal and kayaking tuning, there's also a discussion in the comments about split the cost and how much it will cost and how much, like if there wasn't a dam, then nothing would have to be maintained. There is a, there's a physical piece, and then the liability of the danger of the dam. Um, and then the next, there's just one more pie chart on the next page and it's a question I, Todd asked, a clue about bond issue, they would support a bond to help pay for some kind of modification or removal or improvement. And it overwhelmingly is supportive. And then I just pulled a few of the quotes out and again, you have all of them, so you'll be able to keep them on the slide, but I pulled out a few that I thought showed all the different, um, pieces. So, I think again, the big thing is that I, that I heard over and over in the public meeting and the survey and the interviews that this has been going on for a while, that this is a decision that the community's ready to report, you know, like to begin the process.
And the other question I've heard over and over is if you're going to do something with the top side, we have to figure out how to keep the dirt from coming back.
Right.
Because there, the Band-Aid of repairing the water, the water comes and goes with the level, but if you don't fix the farming issues above it, and I'm not blaming farmers, we're, but somehow we have to keep that erosion from coming into the area and plugging what the function of the dam is.
And this is what people, we all, it's all I was at the photo's length, I didn't even understand, I mean, rivers move water, but they also move sediment and that's what they do, that's what they're made to do. And the perfect river has, is the right shape and size to move the sediment that comes to it. And when you build a dam and then when the gate is broken, right, it all piles up. And so you. And so you have this amazing opportunity from a drainage standpoint. Because yeah, all those two main channels that come into the reservoir, to the impoundment are blocked. I mean, and they, sediment can't move. And so that is, you know, so that can be taken care of to, you take what, whatever you do, modify how it moves, either through some kind of new structure or with a gate or if there was a modification or a removal. And that's what engineers, engineers do. And so let me just say too, that just as a review, that you guys do own the dam. You are responsible for it. Um, there was a housing on a dam in Eastern Iowa last summer. Two people on two tubes and there was another lawsuit to the city. That's about, about the dam. And, you know, and even though it's there, even other signs, you're still liable to damage. And even, and if it breaks, and I've got just a couple pages from the dam report, a lot of section that you had in two thousand and fifteen, I feel like maybe that hasn't been, we haven't talked about that much. But otherwise, if you want to go, like, look through the survey, you'll just see, there's a couple things. Anything that you read, I added as a note. And otherwise, the results are in, it's like, like I said, the answers to the quiz. And just one thing about this survey, it's like a pretest. Do you remember, like, I don't know, I used to teach, I was a teacher. And we do that now, like, for the last twenty-five years. You might have like a pretest course to study something. And then you take another test afterwards to see what you, how you change and what you understand. And I want you to consider that that's a pretest. Because there is no, we don't know what anything costs. We don't know what the, what the limitations are. These are just what people support right now. And the next step of the process, which would identify, you guys would identify three alternatives to study. I think you have to put a cost on them within twenty-five percent relative to each other. And then we would go through a similar public process, a meeting, alternative, and then another survey. And that's what you would really take to the bank and say, okay, what should we, what should we do?
Included with those cost estimates would also potentially be funding sources.
Match funding, right. And so just know that nobody pays, I was talking to Rock Rapids, um, and I was just saying, nobody pays for this. If they're modifying, if they're removing a dam or modifying a dam, in some way creating fish passage and removing the hydraulics, like even if the dam stayed in place and you added those things, there's funding sources, you know, federal and state funding sources that help support that. So you're looking for pieces to put together. And that's one of the things the engineer would do, I would do if I were a engineer, is like show you with the alternatives, what are the funding sources that are there that you can apply for. So in the end, you decide what to do. And then you take a little bit of time, sometimes a couple of years, to get some money through grants, write grants, um, find that funding source, find out, figure out what's left to make up locally. And then you go forward and do it. So it's not like you have to figure this out today. This is something that I would recommend that you do continue the momentum back on yourself. And that you get an engineer hired to look at alternatives. And from that, then make a decision. And that, that could happen in twenty years, for sure. And then, then you'll know what you can do, and you can start raising money, you can start raising awareness, you can start writing grants and Todd can do that with all the resources as well. The other thing too, that I think is really outstanding and not, I don't always see it, is, um, that everybody seems to want to work together. I mean, the county entities that I've talked to, the city entities that I've talked to, organizations, the boards, the council, everybody seems to want to work together. And that's really great, that's a very great position to be in as well. Um, yeah, I guess that question five is pretty important. Um, this was the thing was to look at outcomes and issues. And then I ordered them by clusters, like eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent or more of this first light couple of those, four of those, seventy percent, seventy-five, eighty-four percent. Now, next row, and then at the very bottom, this being a whitewater type feature. And so that is not, you know, that is not a big deal in the community. Like, it's so much longer than all those things, but I gave it its own, its own category. Um, and that's, you know, that's just one question. And then if you notice, the one question five is to get italicized, I'm sorry, because the font also has a sort of a green left. Isn't everyone here reading left and right? Uh, but all of the comments that were made from question five and question, uh, section four and question six are all here. Very word for word, there's one that I, I did, and question seven too, I did, um, put some dots, not because it was unrelated, the comments were a bit unrelated to the question, to the issue at all. But otherwise, you have everything that, that was there. So that's the state of the game, I would say. And also from the, to the very end, is that I just took three pages from your dam report. If you could go to the last, very last page. I added some yellow highlights to just what are the basic conditions that the term to section dam looked at. And so there's a, there's a bit about the control gate. And they're already in prevent shape. And it does talk about, you know, for the corrosion and could be a major failure from losing a severe discharge of water. And I think that's something you want to avoid. You want to avoid, you know, I think you want to quickly get it to all uncomfortable. Because you don't want it to fail. Because once it fails, all of that is going to come out. And I think what you wanted to do to be in the best case is not have to be trying to clean up and take care of the damage that would occur down the stream. And, you know, from flooding, that typically happens in a big flood event, right? So there would be a lot of water built up and a lot of force. Um, and I would just say, you know, we haven't given a lot of face time to the, to the condition of the dam. And when you look at it, it looks okay. I mean, the visual piece of this whole thing is also quite important to people. The dam is described as an eyesore, the impoundment is described as an eyesore and by a large percentage of the public. And that's important, maybe not as important as the structural liability. Uh, but let me just say briefly too, um, that you do own the dam and you determine what, what happens to it. I like to think of it as like a county bridge. If you need a new county bridge on a road, you own the bridge. There are standards that the D N R requires and federal highway requires for like how much load it can carry be, uh, how wide it needs to be, that kind of thing. But you determine what it's made out of and its features. And the dam is the same way. There are several basic standards that D N R enforces for dams. But you decide what you want to do with it. And then you have to meet those standards, just because it's infrastructure and it's being, it's D N R related. So it is, there is, you know, D N R is not going to tell you what to do. They hope that people do something, I think, but to make it safe. But they, it's really all, all.
But in reference to the Zoom meeting we had, where the comment was made that we own the dam and we've neglected what has happened behind the dam. We, we have no control over being able, we can't hire our contractor to go out there and start pulling dirt out of that sediment up there behind there. That's a D N R thing, right?
Well, you would need to, you know.
We'd have to work with the D N R in order to do something like this, right?
A federal and state permit.
But when they, the comment was made that basically the county has served their duty for lack of a better. We, we still don't have the ability to do anything other than control the dam, take care of the dam. We don't have the ability to say, we went in there and start hauling that dirt out and make it a channel and make it work.
They need a permit to do that.
And all has to be done through the D N R.
And it's the board that cares too.
Right.
It's controlled and it is how, how it happens, it matters.
Exactly.
Right.
But that comment kind of bothered me and I was trying to get on to the, to reply to that and then the call was over, but.
No, and I agree, I don't like the way that sounds either, but it's, the dam itself is what's blocking the whole thing.
Right.
And I think that's what you need to decide, what do you want to get as an outcome? And then you're going to ask a, a design, you know, prime team of engineers to say, how do we get that? So if you want improved drainage, ag drainage, you want sediment to move through the dam, you want floods to settle, you know, what are the things, what are the things that you want? And then they can give you, look at alternatives to get that. And gave that meat a permitting, a permitting. It's just like a river, you've got to get all kinds of stuff for that. There's all kinds of issues that have to happen. You can do anything you want, but you do have to, you know, they, they don't want that sediment being, you know, getting diluted and there's ways that it has to be handled because it's weight, you know? Yeah, so in terms of moving forward, I would just say that, you know, if you, if you do decide to move forward quickly, it sounds like that's what the public is hoping that you'll do. You really could just, unless you, unless the engineer is on board in studying this, then you can just sit back. Because it'll take a while for that to all flush out. And then there'll be another public meeting. It's not like you would need to have a lot of eye on it and hands on it, you know? Um, and then it would, over as much time as the Conservation Board wanted, it could be, it would evolve. But it wouldn't be something that would occupy a huge amount of your time.
So would the, this engineering unit, I mean, we're not talking about just regular engineering.
Right, that's correct.
It would have to be some.
Someone who works with dams, building new dams, modifying dams.
So probably nobody from Humble, I mean, I'm just being smart. It'd be someone from a different location than, do you know the need?
Honestly, Bruce, I've had several firms contact.
Oh, all right. Good.
And my company was here as well. So timeframe, so what do you think, if we do start moving, for how long before we get an engineering bid going? Or what's the kind of timeframe of everything?
See, uh, maybe we'll go to the Conservation Board meeting first to give them roughly the same report that you just gave. Um, what I would like to speak is after that, if we could facilitate a joint meeting, if you guys were to sit down with the Conservation Board, I mean, Conservation Board has to say, you guys own the river, I think we're doing, we're going to.
It's got to be a knowing thing.
Yeah, folks too, I will start on the same. Yes, we still probably want to do that. But at that meeting, we could talk about our three options that we want to take into the long term. And how we want to know about hiring an engineer firm. And then we can move forward to hire.
I'm, I agree.
I, I agree too. I think every, not every, the majority of the people are on board with this. And it's, it's going to be time, I think, we get to do something.
I think you stay away from this process so far as the time you're shot at the amount of interest that the public can show in the project, in the dam, what's going to happen to the dam. We've just been talking about Bruce, two thousand and two. I think that river development, it got draped up in here in almost twenty years and there's it. Nothing's been done. Those comments were made at the end of that, that we had, when we last did that. I, I keep all that, I have been involved with the city before the end of town. I was involved in those conversations, I can't let us do something. The challenge has been hammering out the consistent payment. This is what we want to do, this is what we need to do.
For the money.
And ultimately, this is how we're paying for it.
Right.
We have a mission to do.
I like that sound.
Well, we, we look at, another thing, Todd, is the outside amount of people that are interested because of the fact that the campground, so the people coming in and from the fishing. There are so many people that I've heard from that say, you guys truly aren't taking that dam out because that's the, like, the walleye fishing. We come from all over to fish there. And it's like, no one's doing anything.
Take that dam out, that's all.
Well, and they're worried about that.
Well, what happens is the fishing changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if, if the fish, you know, the dam is trapping them.
Yeah, it's, it's a stop.
Right. It's one of those, I do sort of shooting a deer. But what happens is the structures change and it actually allows more people. I think so too, right now. I mean, if we have, we worked with another team of rock people, really steep banks and all anglers, many of them are older and what we were able to do is create a way better place for them to get to the river. And the change does change, but there was still the fishing. And there would be fish going upstream and reproducing, upstream and doing those things. I've been able to do for a while. But angling is very important. And there was a letter from the fishery biologist on the Story Map. And he talked about the idea of making it like an angler's park, like a fishing, like the whole thing. People got all fishing. And not just, here's a fish like.
Yeah, if you have all the options you choose, you could actually make the fishing better.
Right, it's a killer.
Well, we don't, very few remember when the hatchery was in full, swinging down there with the ponds and, I mean, I, I was a little kid, but still.
I agree with yours. Tying everything we have around, maybe the shelter, the trail system, fishing, uh, so they can try again. You tie a lot together, really valuable.
And no need for an act of drainage. There's one way to fix all of those.
Well, see, the message started, you got all this interest and now we got people thinking about it and.
We got to get to where it's at. Hundred and seventy-five people took the survey.
Yeah.
And that's amazing. A lot of people from a town the size of Humble or a county. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like it's a mass man that just shows up and they fill it out and send it back. They, they, it kind of gets all.
Right, well, they had to find a way, yeah, they had to find a way. Yeah, that's pretty good. Well, Michael was home this last week and we went for a walk down cotton. He could not believe how much, his grandparents owned the house, right? You know, and he's like, oh my God. And I go, yeah, because this cleared out the boat ramp.
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
I thank you for all of your time and effort.
It's really interesting.
Refereeing.
The whole process was very interesting to me and I look forward to, to watching the project forward. Good. Yeah. And my contact information on the front cover, if you see anything about this survey that you have questions with the whole process, feel free to jump in.
Are there copies that this isn't public yet or is this?
Or concerned?
Yeah.
Because I thought the minute I get out of here, there's people going to be saying, wondering, can we do that? Can we?
Yeah, I would typically not put a full survey on the Story Map like I'm giving you. But we'll have a, we'll have a summary. I thought maybe after the Conservation Board meeting.
I was wondering, that's just what, twenty-first, it's a couple weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
And we'll do the graphs and the summary questions. I don't typically give all this information, it's just not useful really. I mean, I might confuse some things. Yeah. But we would definitely, that's the other thing that I'm glad you said that. Um, you know, my, my position is to be as open, completely open and honest with you about what I see and what I hear. And that's the way it needs to be. And so I try to bring you all this, not to, you know, tell you all the burdens of everyone what they want, but I think this is reality. And that's been my position all along, to be a hundred percent transparent with you. And I would want to be the very transparent with the public. And that's the point of this right now.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Great to, great to see you in person.
Thank you. It says a note here, you're going to get some updates, COVID, right? After you.
Yeah.
Right, we are at the end.
Hey, we're, we've done, we've done about everything we can do.
All right.
Have you had any email from purely Humble? The government's half money or whatever is coming out. Updating me or letting me know about the ramp on the TV and your trail. It's a one-time thing, the government paid Iowa five million dollars to use more. Trail extensions, trail permits, trail, anything trail related.
Bridge?
Possibly a bridge, yeah. So, and I realized the time from this isn't, isn't super. So, and I realize the time from this isn't, isn't super, um, with everything that we have going on. The potential situation, maybe the time kind of, trying to solve it a little bit. But the minimum grant that you can apply for, the minimum amount is five hundred thousand. The max is one thousand two hundred and five million. Um, do make stuff a bit, so there's a really quick turnaround because you need resolution when the supervisor's supporting it, resolution when you need engineering drawings and just a lot to get put together in a short amount of time. Um, what your budget is, are you guys seeking support of pursuing this right now? Um, that's a whole major call.
It's a match.
I'm just gonna ask, any thoughts in mind? What to do with, I mean, you gotta have something to do.
Yeah. Three different projects. To me, the, the best one would be the old building, the challenges. But we've been working with the Heritage Foundation to make an extension to the...
We can share here, we can share now.
Do you have a map for the...
From Sheldon Park, uh...
Here, Todd, I can look this thing.
East or towards the bridge. There's properties there, are you with me? That says Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, the bottom of the page. So, uh, finalizing an easement with the Heritage Foundation to get a trail established through that area. The island that you see in the, in the river there is Scout Island, the county owns that. So what I would like to do is apply a grant to the bridge across that little bay there, backwater area.
So if that's on the Sheldon Park side, bridge?
Bridge would be here.
Yeah.
And then for now, we'll probably do a looped trail around Scout Island. But eventually, I would really like to connect it to this Eagle Ridge property that we will try to dig with the city of Humble. Um, we haven't had an easement yet to make that connection. Um, at this point, the property owner is not, not interested in working on this right now.
But the Indian Trail used to be over in there?
It's close somewhere in there, yes. Where exactly that is, that's a great question, if you, if you have any knowledge.
Oh, the grove now, yeah.
Because I've had several people ask me about that. But that would be, at least getting that bridge across there and getting that trail established. If that part of the city has a, has a grant that they're going to do, to trail on the Eagle Ridge area. And, uh, the bridge that we've been talking about for the last...
Bridge from nowhere, I mean, from the...
Yep, yep, is gonna be here.
Now where is that bridge?
Now where is that, again, I'm sorry.
Uh, it'd be like roughly right here, behind a park shop. And basically, you're right up that road, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Now that's still in motion for...
Still to go, it would be twenty twenty-two construction.
This is the third year of our match, right?
Our grant was approved, right?
Yes, right, yup. We got seven hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars. So I guess, I did a terrible job of explaining this, but you kinda see my vision of taking that connection with Sheldon Park.
Well, our question, my question would be, do you have the ability to make paperwork, trail happen in that short time? Because the way the COVID money is, if you don't have the paperwork filled out, you aren't gonna be able to...
I think I can. My last question to you is, are you, are you in the position to kick in any more money?
That's a, how close the match, with the match?
It can be, they'll pay a hundred percent, Sandy.
Oh.
But it says right in there that a grant that asks a hundred percent of total cost as opposed to one hundred percent is going just for considerably better than what it's asking for a hundred percent.
Well, now, now, you're looking at...
The match should have a realistic shot at it.
Right, you're gonna have a hundred thousand dollars.
You'd have a five hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, five hundred thousand minimum, you'd have a shot at it.
And I would say it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a very competitive process.
It's only like a different minimum of five hundred, it could be ten grants given out or maybe only five if they're bitter ones.
Yeah, I guess, off the record, just the roaming, Seater Rapids, Iowa City, you're probably gonna get...
The big chair.
Yeah, the little guys are gonna fight for that last...
We're gonna show you guys a comer too and say, we did our best to get it out of the city limits.
Okay.
So you're thinking of us taking at least a, a hundred thousand of county?
Probably, Sandy, I guess I'm gonna be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the other question is, so the bond that we did, that probably all goes back to the dam thing that we just discussed.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's no money.
You can't use that for that.
No, it would be different money than coming up with a hundred thousand. But is that just, you're guaranteeing that, but you know, if this grant didn't go through, then what did? You'd have no...
You don't have to come up with anything, right? And I guess the last thing I should add is that these projects need to be completed by September twenty twenty-three. So there is a little lead time, you know, if we did turn one in, if we're successful. You do have a little bit of time to come up with your cash, local management, we'll say.
That's a lot of popcorn to drink.
But I get it, it's a lot of money.
Well, a few thoughts, a few rest. Stand here. I might ask you a question. You know, you're talking about this trail going down to Skydive. There, sometimes we get hit some pretty high water through that areas. Is that gonna be a maintenance issue down the road? Like, oh geez, now we put this in, geez, all of a sudden now we're spending a ton of money every time we have major flooding to repair it, because it...
It probably wouldn't be ready.
I, I mean, I've actually been in Bison Trails area.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you just walked.
Over in Cedar Falls, Waterloo area, they got an extensive paved trail. And, you know, when they get high water, that's a lot that's underwater. And then they gotta go back in and clean and clean and crash, sometimes do repairs with asphalt. And that's my concern, is that you do something that's, boy, it's gonna nickel and dimes for a long time.
What happens occasionally? I, I bet anyway, we have a lot. Scout Island sits fairly higher.
This probably gets more water on the backside than does on the front side. That water backs up into that channel more than, than it does on the front side because the water there, that, that's pretty much rock face, kind of go on there.
And to say that we had concerns with that project, my other thought was maybe adding to the north-south portion of the Three Rivers Trail. I get asked a lot, how can you pay more paved trails? Uh, have you worked any, any...
You really wanna know, I get, I'll try to, try to tie it together, but I, I mean, no one knows. We didn't have the big survey done as we did on the dam. How much this process of the Scout Island and the interconnected trail would even be, otherwise, would it be a big thing? Yeah, it'd be a neat thing. I'm not disagreeing, but paving trails, if you want, you draw people to a trail. If it's paved, it draws them exponentially more than unpaved like this. Although this is one of the nicer unpaved trails, I think, in the state. As far as distance and scenery and everything, I will give it that. But you pave a trail, Todd, and you'll get...
I agree.
Essentially more traffic on it.
You'd rather steer in that direction?
I, if I, if you were taking the vote, I know not, I would stay, steer towards looking at paving a portion of the trail and just get the start.
I don't pursue our heads because it's usually two hundred dollars to pave a road from that side. So how far would five hundred thousand dollars go?
And if you're talking an eight-foot wide, ten-foot wide road or a four-foot wide trail?
I would think there'd be some thousands of miles, I think, to drive.
Yup, you can argue.
So, you're not going very far to get to that.
But your longevity of that would, because you don't have, put in bike traffic.
And you don't have semi driving on it.
Hmm?
You don't have semi.
No, you don't have that. Then the corner is getting beat down for...
Yeah.
You will be, yup, because getting back to Rick's maintenance, getting back to Rick's maintenance thing, and I've written on, for amount of trails paved and unpaved, the concrete will hold up and the asphalt as well, road, just like an asphalt road. And we just talked, we just talked today about asphalt road maintenance. You have the same thing on an asphalt trail, that's a maintenance.
But it's on one of the bases.
No, you can see out, it's a maintenance. You know, the taping is, you know, it's like, you can see, in what area did you have kind of designated that?
Yes, Eric, I thought if we do the east-west portion, I see that upsetting the soviet leaders.
Yup.
Obviously, definitely. It wouldn't be as usual for them.
Yup.
And the north-south portion, which would be, even if you just did from the KHDT Road south, where it ends, it'd be two and a half miles. It would be a start, I mean, do something. In my mind, at that point, we would clear this snow off that in the winter, people could use it, you know, in the winter time. So, I like, I like Cotton Beach, it's so nice that you can get out the bow on a day and walk on.
Hugeness, loyalty, it's fair, it's just an improvement. Your value for your buck is gonna be a lot bigger with that than a trail on Scout Island.
I like that idea too.
And probably the, the maintenance is gonna be a bare minimum, that's what's up.
So with your blessing, that's the direction I'll go. I can have the engineer's estimate officially, so I can report back to you guys when I do get that.
It makes a huge, I, I've seen where they think for many...
I think something, you know, once you start, two years later, you can add a couple more miles, you know, and things like that.
The only thing that slows down, although there'll be a great opportunities, it's just that this one's kinda neat because most of the great opportunities are for new trails. Those don't include existing, currently exist, so it's more difficult to just start. So...
I, I've, I've, again, seen it, other people have seen it where they've done similar, where they've started and extended or put in a pave in a smaller area and then it does kinda grow and it does get used. I think that would be the direction.
Okay. I will dive in, and at some point, I'll have to come back. Like I say, I need a resolution or support from you guys, as one of the stipulations that you're making. And kind of update you where I'm at with that.
Yeah.
Can you also let us know on the twenty-first, whatever you guys decide on that?
Because for you guys, are you willing?
I'm whatever.
Do you do like an evening, enjoy the evening with the conservation board? Or would you rather have the conservation board come here on a Monday morning and try and hammer it out? You're...
I'm willing, I'm willing. I think it'd be, with you guys, when it's more convenient for you guys to show up.
Right.
Because otherwise, you know, trying to get them guys lots of work.
They gotta get air. Probably get maybe three, five here on a Monday morning. But again, I know you guys all have stuff going on too, so...
I think it's a, it's a worthwhile thing to do an extra thing at night. I think it'd be easier for them to, to meet with us, I think it would be a good idea.
And Todd, you would wanna do that after the regular board meeting that Mimi was gonna go and talk with the conservation board? So, but that meeting got sometimes altered.
First, yeah. Is there a night that would be, that works better for you guys?
Well, that probably wait for me is miserable because I have Monday and Wednesday, Wednesday and Friday.
Right after.
So, worst, the last week of the month for me, I have, I'd know...
My, the last two weeks of the month are crazy.
Yeah, so, depending on how fast you wanna do it, the first part of the month is definitely for my schedule.
Do it the first weekend, may I find it fast?
Yeah, I would be available either the third, fourth, fifth, because I'm, I'm babysitting for a few days.
Third or fourth, I won't be available.
I honestly don't know, depends on the planning season.
Yep, no, I get it, Eric. It's gonna be hard to pick a date that works for everybody.
Well, can you just, you wanna do it like, kinda like the timeframe of the conservation board meeting, kinda like...
They, they meet six at night or something?
Typically, you can do six o'clock on a Wednesday, third Wednesday is our, is our regular.
I mean, Wednesday's worked with me in the evening, I don't have any, well, other than the dog shelter, which is, which, is that the second or third Wednesday day?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
At least that fifth, meet fifth, that Wednesday, meet fifth.
Pretty decent date for most of the year.
I mean, I, I can't tell you today, I mean, I just don't know.
Where do we get that?
Yeah.
But otherwise, so you're talking like a six o'clock timeframe, but the, the conservation board can be... Well, they're used to, because like you said...
They could have done it earlier. Maybe it's probably we could, we could buy it.
I'd be, I'd rather have a five than six, time-wise. You could put it down and buy them at your board meeting and you can open it up. And then you'll just have to let us know.
Obviously, I'll, I'll be after Tuesday.
Right. They might tell you something different, you don't know. You might get shot down at your board meeting. Very challenging. I'll just put a question mark.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Todd.
Lots of information, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good luck with it all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks.
Okay, a lot of questions. Uh, Mimi, must be Cole.
Yes, sir.
All right, Cole, call me, Cole Anderson. Uh, he called me a week or two ago and, uh, he just wanted to, uh, visit with the board about, he does, I have estimation work.
Thank you, sir.
Yup, I just wanted to be able to, I could get him up here and come on board, and get to know the supervisors. And they get, and, uh, I guess. Visit with you a little bit of our processes that we go through, so if we do work, we're done, correct, I guess.
Yup. Uh, one thing I'd like to say before we started is that, on that project we were just talking about, that Scott Island, I've grown up there my, most of my life, and that Scott Island, it was really fun. The river gets high, the whole island's underwater. So I just thought, it might be good if you guys just take that into consideration when you incorporate your team. That whole island is pretty, is pretty bad, I'm sure it is, it was. But that's besides, anything that I'm hearing, it was just... But I just wanted to kinda mean to everybody, and I do a lot of one-range for a lot of drainage, which is, I gave you a reference page or a page of references for, I do a lot of work in Coca-Cola County and Paul Austin County. Um, but I'm always looking to do more. I just wanted to kinda, Eric, Rick said that if you guys come here and we never put the... Can you answer any questions if you guys have any?
My, I will say, I know if you're doing work for farmers in the county, you need to get into the right of way. Make sure you contact our county engineer Ben out there. Uh, he'll give you all the information you need to have, you know, prior to getting the road ditched. Because a lot of times we get the call, oh, they want to go through the ditch and it's, it's a Wednesday and we haven't approved it yet.
Yup.
You know, and, oh, it's gonna rain, we wanna get it done. So, it's always nice to have a little notification for people to start working in the right of way.
Yup.
There's a lot of sensors, all kinds of wires and whatnot, that we don't want to mess up.
That, and I would say that the more pictures you take of anything that you're doing, the better off. The chances are that we aren't gonna be throwing a fist.
I, I just...
There's a, the stuff and see her wanna talk about the bill. Because the more pictures we get, unless one of us is standing there to say, yep, I see, go ahead and do that, we have no way of knowing that something was really there or really needed. So, the more pictures you get and get to...
Yeah, this is Kim Lanning, she's our...
Strange.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Cole Anderson.
So, I guess that, and, um, the other thing is, is she or the office has to be notified before anything is, can be done, right?
On county mains.
On county.
Protocol is, which I think you've learned this.
Yes, I...
Uh, work orders.
Yes, and I have work orders for all the jobs. Besides, I have one question that I, he said, talk to the trucker, she said to go ahead and do it, but I never, I never got the work order itself. And that was kind of, I'll admit, I kinda, when I first did work for you guys last year, it was kind of a work in curve and I definitely worked a lot, so...
Well, we appreciate that.
But that, that's the main thing, um, and, and you're gonna have this issue where the farmer says, yeah, that's a county main. Now, that's because his dad is trapped in full from that and it really isn't. So whenever you're gonna be doing any work, it's best to come to, up to our office and look... to come up to, up to the order office and look at the map, so you know before you start doing it in the field, just because the farmer says that something may not be what it is, because it's just here late.
Yep.
And we've had issues like that before it happened, and we sent them a bill, and they're unhappy, because they all thought it was a county main for the last forty years, and it wasn't.
True. Cole, can I get your email address, and then I'll, I'll send you something?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna Back inside of the business card.
Okay, thank you.
That might ease it for you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, the other thing, kind of what Rick said, 'cause yeah, they, they may think it was a district tile, and may never have been a district tile, just thought it was, or you're fixing something privately for the farmer, which they know is a private tile, well, you're out here, that happens to be a broken, you know, district tile, fix that, don't touch it to get a work order. If it's legitimately a district tile, and it's legitimately broke
The problem we run into is someone else might already have that work on his schedule, you know, so we don't have to, to somebody else, they just haven't gotten it.
Kim would know, because like Rick, that there would be an existing work order, maybe, maybe not, maybe it just happened.
Yeah.
But you still need a work order.
Right. And there could be a situation where I have assigned somebody to a work order, that they're not able to get to it, and I can reassign it to.
Yeah, if they haven't touched it for about a year, we reassign them, because we don't want people just banking up work.
Right.
We want to get
Or, yeah, run it into a problem where they just start getting to it, yeah, to get them fixed.
We've got too many other projects. Um, as for work with the long reach, we were just discussing here earlier, that we were getting pretty well caught up in that, um, we had a couple of projects that are already assigned to people, but, um, forgot to ask Todd about that tra- uh, trail crossing, but, um, so, we'll
Appreciate the references, though, and I take it, I mean, you got Polk County, you know, also, and so you've done some ditch cleaning in those counties?
We did twenty-nine and a half miles last year of ditch cleaning, and Gary Patrick on there, he is the, he's technically the assistant engineer in Polk County, but he does all of the drainage, like, they kinda do it different over there, he is, he does all the drainage, the supervisors just tell Gary, and then Gary comes up and drills through everything, and that's who I talk to. I honestly, I think I've only met the two of the supervisors in Polk County, and that is where I do a lot of work, is over there, so he's kind of the guy that will know a lot, and then I've done quite a bit of Paul Offutt County for those two supervisors also.
Appreciate the references. So Cole, Clay Hanson is just still nowhere.
Yep, yep, he's, he just likes to put himself down, so I just got that, you know, stuck around, so
Well, and I guess the other thing that I would, if you're in a area somewhere, it does, a phone call to her and say, hey, I'm, my machine's setting up here, do you have something in this area?
Yep.
And at least touch base with them, and, ah, because if something pops up, it might get assigned, but other than that, that's the assigned job, is the people that get it, so
I just wanted to meet everybody and
Yeah, I appreciate you coming in, Cole.
Yeah, thanks.
Best way to do it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you, Cole.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Anything else out there for
I just have a question about this FYI agreement, I'm not
Yeah, what was that?
Just, is there anybody to ask clarification on that?
Which frame is this?
Well, it's just one of, the bottom of our packet.
You want
About, um
Okay, I'll just
Franklin County and Holmwood and
I'm not getting called in.
No, I'm not. Where did I see that?
I'm just curious if that's something that
Yeah, what is that?
Really didn't get
It was on the agenda.
No, it's just something that was there.
I wondered the same thing. I was trying to stretch, but
My count.
I lost the name. Oh, there it is. I just wondered if she'd gotten something from an agreement that she was, we could ask her, you want me to go grab her?
Yeah, well, just, anything else?
As far as drainage right now, all I have is a few invoices that will need looked over, and
And then you wanted to ask them
Yeah, I've got one for you, Bruce, no, actually, both of yours are
One of them, one of them, agreed, Chris, what is it?
And I have one for you, Eric, that was turned in today to no work order reference. Yeah.
We'll have to figure that out.
I can leave this with you.
This is what she asked her earlier, a couple weeks ago, by the nonprofit.
She just came over to this
Yeah, this is an example of Franklin County, um
But they're
They had a couple, actually, examples.
And how they did their nonprofit
Treatments. Uh, we did
Made here, came over and asked for money. We, uh, have them sign
And a A for read.
And there's a couple other examples too, that I can print them off, too.
I just, I think it'd be a good thing that someone comes in and asks for donations, that we, I won't sign that when they know it's worth
I don't repair, but it doesn't
Cover it.
And it also There's actually two different branches
The way that physically keep track
Every time
Too much, yeah. Of who
Could we do this? Could we have you get the other two copies of the water over county? Send them upstairs and
It's Franklin County has like three of them.
Oh, all right. Well, however
Three, three
This is actually
John, John
Reason
Look and talk
But, and
Yeah.
Now, that's a broken, we not, you know, it's been being taped back in the summer, I wasn't
But you look back and you didn't, you don't
Yeah, it's just kind of
Researching
Okay.
Yeah, anything that would have created and
I may need to do some further research and see if if there is something else that's
Did you, for this second, what was that, section?
Yeah.
Just put down, uh, just a week or two, never wait.
And there is
I'd have John
I totally know
Go us up some time and
Unless, yeah, he's related to one of these
Have him do it, have him do an agreement together.
And Gary Noah's had
To cover all the entities that come
Like a year or two
Nonprofit
That's a good idea. So I wonder if something happens, you know, uh, pretty fair, claiming that something happened, like, um, upstream. That's the only thing
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can't find a work order on it, but I'll take this, and I'll try to do
You put it down there?
Additional information for you.
You got the number, the phone number?
Nope.
Do you mean the server?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I
What, are they removed?
I do, I have
The first step in that is to contact
Maybe
I can't remember what he called it, that they do, they take the tips off of the cord, you know, those little plastic plugging things. Re-tipping, I think is what he called it, but that's the first step, we need to get is an estimate, um, and see what that would involve, and at that
We'll get to the bottom of it, then we'll see.
We can, um, go ahead and see how much of the solutions themselves to come and physically move it. Uh, like I said, I have grant money from the HOCS cares for cybersecurity, which would be able to apply for that, it's already physically here, the ten thousand dollars. Um, it's just a matter of if it's okay to go ahead and look at that, um, I just have some questions on where would feasibly be the best location for it? Uh, right now downstairs, directly below it is the election room, which is where we have all of our election equipment, it's packed full of stuff.
Is there stuff we can eliminate on there, to make room there, 'cause that'd be a good room to have, though, 'cause you're not in there very often, it's always locked.
The other
The election room could be moved clear over in that far corner, through the pub, uh, back in that corner office.
Yeah.
But that thing is so full of old computers that it take a
They don't need to clean the
Busload of
My thought was, there's a room between Sharif and, uh, that full storage area. It's, um, not carpeted or anything like that, so there'd be no static or anything else affecting it. It's a pretty small, little room, I mean, it gives sufficient
Space for
Space and circulation.
Is there an air conditioner in that room presently?
I don't know yet.
You have to keep things cool and certain humidity and everything, too.
Yeah, and you'd probably need an additional one wherever you put it, and I think when you use that, that the best thing to put on it too would be some, um, alarm things to indicate the temperature of the machines, because right now, they'd be going off all the time, it's so hot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool and dry.
And like with the other room, where there's no carpet, it's being currently used kind of as an overflow for admin stuff, so I'm assuming that's gonna go away.
Yeah.
Um
First off, we have to figure out that background that Dave's referring to
That
The computers, I think the new computers, if they've got, uh, brains taken out of them, that they need
Some do.
Well, and then what we gotta do from there? Somebody said something about giving away, somebody said something about target practice, somebody said something about, I mean, that was the comment.
I know the last time we cleaned that room, I'm amazed at Cole, right?
Oh, my God.
We cleaned it and took it all over, it's secondary roads, and we had a hay rack full of old computers, the whole rack for about five dollars, and it was virtually, it wasn't worth it, I was carrying over there.
I'm six-seven, and I couldn't see the back over the top of the
I had to literally climb. The stuff to get, we have our, um
He said, there's chairs back there, they may be better than the chairs we got upstairs.
Yeah.
Oh, more chairs in there than I could see.
Maybe we need to, uh, find a place to take old computers to dispose of them, and that would be
And the hard drives need the brains taken, 'cause the HIPAA Act
Yeah, they gotta be stripped out.
Stripped out of them.
And destroyed somehow.
Take those out and shoot them.
Okay.
Sharif just said something about stuff that he's using for target practice, I think she's put on a computer to make it, wanting to be using it, but that's what her comment was, so
If we could be gotten rid of
But I guess if we could take that stuff in here and take it straight down, less wiring, just go through the floor and right to the ceiling, as long as that would be dry, would be
That, when John was down there, I think would be a lot, and I don't see, that whole rack system we have right now is not very full, um, you could bring everything up to a higher level, I just don't know. What I hate to see is the election, we have so much election junk.
Well, yeah, but that room is still pretty good
But the junk, I mean, like you said, it's stuff.
Oh, it's stuff we utilize.
Yeah.
And we have to deck them all out every
Yeah, but can we, we can move some of that stuff to another room or something, you know, to get rid of some of the other stuff that is actually junk.
But that would be a, still would be a secure room, and you, if you're securing it for the
Election
Computer stuff, the election stuff would be right there, there's that, there's room to the north of that, wasn't there, there's still quite a bit of room in there.
All right, well, after, let's, after a meeting, let's go down and take a look around, see what's hanging there. Anything else?
Go adjourn.
Thank you. Sorry.
Back up.
What?
Nope, never mind, that was it, sorry, false alarm.
Okay. I would take the first, again, you have the second, for Mary, go on in favor.
All right.
We are adjourned. At ten.
Fourteen.
Habba habba. Yeah, I think